Liberty and justice for all.
If everybody could remain standing for a quick second, I'm sorry about that. Um, we have a moment of silence tonight for three members of our community who also worked in the school for quite a many years. Joan Fadon, Arthur A Elston Senior, and Audrey Gearhart all passed away recently. If you could all please bow your heads in a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Um, if you could please silence your electronic devices. And it looks like we have a few students who might be here for a government class on your sheets. Um, my name is Timothy Crumley. I'm running the meeting. That's one of the lines on there at the end of the meeting. Any one of the board members can sign your, um, your piece of paper. So, um, at the end of the meeting, come up to any of us and any of us can sign, um, for your class. I think those are the only two things that you need to fill out on there. So hopefully we'll get done early and we can get you home. Motion to move the agenda to the table made by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by, ooh, Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Todd. Dr. Evans, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
There are none at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Dr. Evans. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as is? Made by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Ms. Jersey. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you so much. Uh, motion to recess for public hearing on policy 2325, video conferencing of board meetings made by Mrs. Jersey, seconded by Mrs. Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered.
So, uh, the board and community, uh, last year, New York State changed its open meetings law to allow municipal boards to provide live streamed, uh, video conference meetings in which board members could attend remotely. Uh, and, uh, community members would be allowed to, uh, participate through our, our public comment period remotely as well. So think of it as a live streamed Zoom meeting, uh, so long as, uh, the board members who were attending remotely had some extraordinary circumstance that prevented them from attending in person and that there was an in-person quorum of Board of Education members. Uh, the New York State School Boards Association has, uh, revised its video conferencing policy, policy, policy number 2325. Uh, this policy was reviewed by the Board's Policy Committee. In order for the Board of Ed to enact this policy, it was first hold a public hearing, which we're doing presently, and, uh, then, uh, should the Board want to, uh, it can adopt the policy after that immediately after the first reading, after the second reading, whatever the Board's pleasure is. Um, so this does eliminate a few, uh, requirements that are under the existing law. Under the existing law, if a board member was attending remotely, we had to provide that physical location and that physical location had to be open to members of the public. Uh, so, uh, for example, if you were out of town, uh, for some, you know, family reason and you were in a hotel lobby or a hotel room, we would put that on the meeting posting and you had to have that space available for a member of the public who wanted to see how you were voting. Uh, so, uh, after some pretty significant discussion, the Policy Committee, uh, wants to move this to the table, uh, for the Board's consideration, and here we are in a public hearing. I don't know if we have any comments from the Board, questions or comments from the Board, or questions or comments from the public.
Bueller? Some people got it. Um, how long do we have to wait?
As long as you want.
I think we're done. Uh, any, would anybody like to make a comment on this policy? Thank you, everybody. Um, motion to reconvene the meeting made by Mrs. Rivera, seconded by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Um, approval of minutes, January 5th, 2023. Motion by Mr. Groden, seconded by Mrs. Greco. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Approval of minutes, January 26th, 2023. I don't want to do you anymore. Mrs. Rivera, seconded by Mrs. Jersey. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Um, Dr. Evans, board award.
Yes. So, uh, the Board of Education, uh, from time to time recognizes, uh, staff, community members and students, uh, for special contributions that they have made to the school community. Uh, the Board receives nominations from staff members, um, for, uh, you know, what they think might be exemplary work that need, that should be recognized by the Board of Education. And it gives me great pride tonight, uh, to recognize, uh, four staff members and a student who last summer did some improvements on the grounds of our elementary schools. And I'm going to ask Ms. Gallit if she would care to join Mr. Crumley and me up here to help describe, uh, what those staff members and student did, and then we will present the, them with these awards.
Right here. Oh, yeah. Front, front, yeah. So we'd like to recognize Joanna Dutcher, Manna, Maura Dutcher.
So last year, um, Joanna Dutcher, the teacher at Hook, spearheaded, uh, our group to, um, paint math movement charts onto our playgrounds for the kids to go out and to move and to, um, use math. And, um, she's coordinated with, with other teachers and with her daughter, and it's really been a great opportunity for our kids on the playground during recess to, to play and to learn at the same time. We're grateful for everything, the time that they spend their own time to come in on weekends and after school hours, um, for our school community. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And there's, uh, she's also cooking available for our award winners. Please help yourself over here. Um, thank you, everyone, for that. Uh, Mr. Feltman, student board member update?
On January 18th, the first high school honor roll ceremony was able to take place since February 2020. The superintendent student roundtable on the 24th, where we just, we had the superintendent student roundtable, where we discussed school management and operations. The first round of interviews for the executive chef position happened on the 24th and 25th, which led to two candidates being chosen to move forward to a final interview. Re, January regents testing has concluded, and with that, we lead into our second semester in the high school. Yesterday, we had the freshman orientation for the current eighth graders and their families. The Soonup Distinction Award Ceremony for marking period two was yesterday. The administration of the high school will be cooking breakfast for the winning homeroom of the toy drive on Friday. Liberty Jazz Festival is this weekend on February 4th. The Buchanan versus Cancer Tournament at SUNY Sullivan will be happening this weekend where several local basketball teams will be playing, and then the SUNY Sullivan team will be playing. On February 14th, the Red Cross Club will be hosting a blood drive in the high school. On January, or on February 15th, the honor roll ceremony for the second quarter will take place, and the next, the next student advisory meeting with Mr. Wilder will happen on February 16th.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Feltman? All right. Thank you very much. Um, moving on to presentations, uh, our assistant superintendent of business was, um, a little bit under the weather today, so we're leaving it all to Dr. Evans. Dr. Evans, budget presentation.
Thank you, President Crumley, and good evening, board members. So tonight is, uh, really our first in-depth, uh, discussion on our budget preparations for 2223. Uh, I do, uh, apologize somewhat to the Board for getting you the late copy of the presentation today. However, yesterday, uh, the Governor put out her budget proposal for the upcoming year, and in that proposal, we received notification of our anticipated state aid for next year. So we knew that was coming up for February 1st, and we wanted to have that in this presentation for you. Uh, so, uh, I, you know, had some of this planned for, uh, the last board meeting that was unfortunately postponed due to weather. So just a reminder for everyone, uh, the Board of Education. Uh, the Board of Education adopted a calendar. Calendar for this upcoming budget season, uh, that details, you know, kind of the meeting structure and, uh, the actions. There we go. That the Board will be taking. So right now, we are in the midst of, or I guess nearing the end of our initial proposal reviews from administrators. Over the last two days, we met with, uh, six principals, uh, prior to that, in between snow closings and delays, we met with our, uh, district directors to get some initial budget, uh, projections for next year. Those will continue through February 13th. Uh, tonight, I'll be sharing with you our rollover budget, what those numbers look like. Talk about that momentarily. Uh, by March 1st, we have to, uh, act on our tax cap, uh, or publicly acknowledge our tax cap. I'll deal with some of that tonight. Uh, Ms., I will defer to Ms. Bayla. Should you have questions on that? I have a general understanding of it, but in terms of the calculation itself, I would defer to her expertise. On our calendar, at the April 11th meeting, the Board of Education is slated to adopt a budget that would go up to the public for approval. You, you recommending we adopt it by that time, however you have until, like with this, April 21st would kind of be the drop dead date in which we'd have to adopt the budget to get it, uh, up on time for the vote. May 4th, we will have our budget hearing, and on May 16th, we will have our budget vote. Uh, we will not have a Board of Education meeting the night of the budget vote, uh, to prevent and head off any potential, uh, issues like we had, uh, last year. The Board of Education has 24 hours to certify the election results. So we have a Board of Education meeting scheduled for the following night, May 17th. Uh, this is the second year of us running a Board of Education Budget Committee. Uh, the members are President Crumley, Mr. Groden, and Ms. Jersey. Uh, we met as recently as yesterday afternoon, and I believe we also had another meeting, uh, earlier in the fall, uh, where we talked about, you know, kind of long-term budget forecasts, what the state aid runs look like from the Governor yesterday, and what some of our priorities are. Uh, recently, our administrators, as I mentioned before, our administrators and directors continue to review their needs, and we're, we'll also, we've started some discussions about vacancies for the upcoming year, uh, and, uh, they're currently kind of finalizing those personnel recommendations. We expect to have those discussions, uh, in early March. And again, we're meeting with district administrators, uh, and principals and directors on their requests. So, potential revenues. So these are the numbers that the Governor gave us yesterday, uh, well, some of them are from this current year. Uh, and I want to stress the importance of the Governor's budget proposal because basically the way the state budget works is, once the Governor kind of puts it up, it's really on the legislature to act on that proposal. So they can certainly kind of add to it or take away from it, but now it's, you know, the legislature has to deal with this. They can't kind of fashion their own budget in isolation. So these are the numbers that we use to make our budget preparations. The legislature and the Governor have to come to an agreement by April 1st. That is why the board approval day is April 11th. This, uh, these numbers reflect the state's requirement, and now finally, full commitment to fully funding foundation aid, uh, in the next school year. So what that means for Monticello is, we will be receiving a 16 and a half percent increase in foundation aid. Foundation aid takes into account a number of factors. It uses, uh, two, the year 2000 census data. Take that for what it's worth, um, and, and other economic indicators in calculating, uh, how much foundation aid we should receive. We also have expense-driven aids. Uh, these are BOSI's aids, transportation aid, textbook aids. Uh, what you notice there is a slight decline, and that number, we believe, is reflective of our ongoing decline in enrollment. So, uh, there is about a 2% decline there, or a difference of $266,000. So for a total aid package in 2324, we are anticipating, or the Governor has proposed that we receive $51.5 million, or an 11.4% increase. Now, there's some cautions with this. Now, this will be the final year of fully funding foundation aid. What most, uh, you know, policy watchers and, and all money watchers suspect is that for 2425, it will go back to the 3% increase in foundation aid. So they will be able to say appropriately that schools are fully funded, and now this is how much more we're adding to foundation aid. Now, some of that might be driven by enrollments, um, but a lot of that is ultimately driven by the Governor and her, uh, budgeting predictions, what her, our Budget Office predicts for oncoming years of revenues. So just know that as we, we head into this process. So we take out the UPK, uh, uh, aid. There is a significant increase there, about, uh, $300,000. We believe that is because we've opened our own pre-K program now. We're no longer subcontracting that, or only partially subcontracting that. We take that out because we don't include UPK-funded positions in our budget. So I'm just taking that out for, you know, kind of what I'm, uh, not proposing here, but just bringing to the Board's attention. If we take that out, we have about a $5 million increase in state aid. So that's about 11%. If we were to take that $4.97 million and just add it to our current budget this year, so let's say we decided, the Board decided to only increase its budget by the increase in state aid. Not touch tax levy, not touch contributions from the fund balance, keep those constant, in other words, 0% increase in tax levy. Without accounting for any of that, if we did, were to do that, we could fund a budget of $99.4 million, which would be a budget-to-budget increase of 4%. So that's not what I'm proposing tonight as a, you know, for the Board's consideration. I'm just telling you, if you kept taxes the same, if you did increase fund balance contribution, and if no additional monies came in, you could increase your, the budget by that amount with this state aid package. Now, there is one other caveat with this state aid. In the runs yesterday, there is a new line for high-impact tutoring set aside. So approximately $530,000 of the Governor's proposal has to be set aside for high-impact tutoring. We are just reading into that now and interpreting it, but the long and short of it is, uh, 30 minutes a day, twice a week, for students in grades three through eight in new tutoring programs. So we can't be existing tutoring programs, that we new programs, students three through eight, uh, twice a week for 30 minutes or more. We're still unpacking that, and that's all I can give you tonight on that. Now, one thing that we're all dealing with, uh, as a district, we're dealing with this this year in our current budget, which will have an effect on how much potential fund balance is remaining at the end of the year. So we are anticipating that number to be less than what it has been in previous years because of inflation, and we also have to look ahead and be cognizant of continued inflationary increases. We're a school district, we buy stuff, we use stuff. Uh, we hire people, we try to retain people and keep them here. Uh, so all of that, we have to, you know, kind of take into account as we develop a budget, but basically what this chart shows is, uh, from the 12-month period of December 21 through December of '22, there was an overall inflation rate of 6.5%. Food went up by about 10.5%. Energy costs went up by 7%, and everything else went up by about, uh, 5.5%. So that's all from U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. Now, now, this is the part where I usually give this over to the Ms. Bayla, so you will forgive me for, uh, not being fully fluent on some of this stuff here. What's really driving, uh, so we calculated a rollover budget. Rollover budget is taking all of our operations and programs this year and just rolling it forward, including contractual increases, uh, that we know are already written into contracts. Health insurance increased January 1st, the individual plan increased by 12.5%. The family plan premium increased 15%. Medicare premium increased 21% and so on. We subscribe to NISHIP, the New York State Health Insurance Protocol. That, uh, sets every January 1st. That's a January 1 through December 31st premium. So we know what health insurance costs are going to be in the fall. We have to make some educated guesses on what's it going to be in the following school year. Retirement system contributions, those are going up minimally, but it will have some effect. They're going up by half a percent. Um, we've calculated for collective bargaining agreements. So our, uh, our big, uh, collective bargaining agreements, which are with our teachers association, our administrators association, our secretarial association, the Board will be acting on a, a new contract with them at tonight's meeting, so we know what those look like. Uh, some other contracts are still being negotiated. We've accounted for inflation, uh, and this is, it's having an impact, but more than having an impact, we're kind of guessing as to where it's going to go. We think we've seen it start in the ed, but we still don't know for sure. Our first draft of a rollover budget is an increase of 2.66% for what would be a budget of $96,970,530. So again, that's accounting for these known increases, taking the same program we have this year, rolling it over into next year. Now, there are a few grant-funded positions that aren't included in there, um, just to be aware of that. So I need, let's stop now and kind of take a break. Any questions on what you've seen so far? Okay. Uh, so some questions that arise from this. Can the district continue to generate enough revenue to support the budget? As I mentioned before, um, state, the state is fully funding foundation aid through next year. After that, their commitment has been fulfilled, and then it's going to become a year-to-year kind of budgetary item. So it could go back to 2% increases, 3% increases, et cetera. Our tax cap calculation, uh, the state has come out and said that, um, uh, the tax cap this year is 2%. However, since as a board, we did not, we have money left, kind of leftover from last year that could be added to the tax levy, roughly around 1.9%, I recall yesterday from our conversation with Ms. Bayla. So what that means is conceivably, and again, I'm not recommending this, we could put up to the voters a budget with a tax levy increase of up to 3.9% without having to get to a 60% approval rate to pierce the tax cap. So the tax cap for this district is not only the 2% this year, but whatever was kind of left behind last year that wasn't taxed. And then we also have to be mindful of our fund balance. Uh, right now, we presently have an undesignedated fund balance, I believe, of around 8.89%. Again, with inflationary costs this current school year that weren't budgeted for, that's probably not going to increase as much as what we initially thought or had, as it has in previous years. Now, uh, Ms. Bayla has provided you with some detailed charts, and you can certainly read these a little bit easier in, on a computer screen, um, but this kind of demonstrates, I'm sorry, it was 3.14% on the tax levy, not 3.9%. So, uh, the, the maximum tax levy increase we could go to without piercing the tax cap for next year would be 3.14%. Uh, you see some of her calculations here, uh, and these just kind of reflect, you know, what we've talked about on these past two slides. When we talk about overall kind of big picture, uh, this reflects kind of the revenues coming in, um, and Ms. Bayla also accounts for some federal revenue that I did not have on my slide, which is about $250,000. If you were to throw that revenue in, we could actually go to a budget increase, a budget amount of $100 million, without increasing the tax levy at all. Again, I'm not recommending that, I'm just giving you some data. So, uh, and there's also data here about where the fund balance is going, and any of you who have been, you know, have seen these before, know that as you start going out in budget years, you typically start seeing deficits because it assumes that nobody retires. And in fact, people do retire. So, uh, that's why you start to see kind of budget deficits start to appear in the later years.
Questions or comments from the Board? Helen?
Nope.
Well, if we took care of Helen, are we all good?
So at the next, uh, budget workshop, will be some, uh, district directors, transportation, uh, facilities, and I believe, I believe, security. We'll be discussing some of their budget increases. We've been working with them on, you know, given these numbers, what, what might be some areas where we can increase, uh, you know, if we can put some of these monies to good use, so.
Jen?
I have a question. So in this fine print of this chart here, for local revenue, so from 2023 to 2024, there's like 1.3 million increase, and it says the change is 2.6%.
What page do you want?
The one that just went away.
The last one?
Yeah, the last one on the chart.
Okay.
It's like the first line in the chart, the local revenue.
48,484.
Yeah, and then it goes proposed 24. Oh, that's next year, that's not, right?
Yeah.
This is what the, what this budget we're talking about, is this the 23 line?
Yeah, so the 23 line is the current budget. So the current tax levy is 48 million, 48.5 million. Okay. I believe that what she accounted for there is increasing, so she increased that by, I think, 2.6%.
Right. Is that kind of what she's thinking?
No, I think she's just showing you what it potentially could be. So if you went to the cap, you went to the cap and included federal, you could go to a $100 million budget.
Yeah, 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 okay.
And she will have at the next meeting, uh, I believe she has to formally present the tax cap calculation, so it's, it'll be, you'll know officially what that number is.
I have another question. So, uh, it looks like the budget with just, uh, let's, with just inflation and, you know, paying people more money per their step and negotiations and everything, it looks like the budget's only going up somewhere between 2.5 and 4%, something like that. Um, what, what is happening, like, how come it's not going up, you know, 6.5%?
Um, so the biggest drivers in our butt in terms of expenditures are often salaries and benefits. So, uh, there are, uh, some, uh, people retiring for next year that, uh, you know, she's replacing them with lower numbers. I would say that not every inflationary item is accounted for here. So we've had some meetings over the past couple of days with principals where we've talked about the increase in postage. We've talked about, uh, for example, in athletics, the increase in costs for officials at basketball games, um, dues to be part of the, of Section 9. So those, some of those things that we weren't, that Lisa wasn't aware about when she put this together are starting to come to light. So that 2.66% budget increase is most likely going to go up from here. Even, even on a roll, you know.
I was gonna say, is it just that inflation, we, it just trickles down, it takes a while to get to here?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, as we have these meetings and uncover stuff, and hey, the contract for this, you know, online program is going to go up X. So there's still things that, uh, and there's still BOSI's bud, you know, increases that we're expecting as well.
Right. And, and so, you know, let's say it's now 2024, interest is generally under control, we're still going to be seeing, like, we're just delayed, kind of, with our budgeting rate for interest. Like, we'll still be seeing increases.
You mean inflation?
Yeah, sorry. Yes, inflation.
Yeah, so there's, like, when we did this budget last year, we didn't know how much fuel oil would cost, as we said today, right? We didn't know how much gasoline and diesel would
We didn't know how much gasoline and diesel would cost, as we said today. So those, you know, we kind of account for that, but I will tell you that what's in our kind of facilities budget right now for fuel, oil and propane is a lot lower than it's ever been at this time. So, you know, we make educated guesses, we kind of figure out, we go on what statements are telling us, but still that, that can change.
Lisa also did mention yesterday she had already budgeted for the health insurance, twelve and a half or thirteen percent in this year's budget, so we didn't see a huge increase in the cost.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Yeah, she was, she was close on that.
Very good, Jen?
Yeah, no, I have one more question. In the beginning, you took the UPK costs out of the budget because it's not part of the budget. That has its own budget, right? I mean, essentially, we get, or, or does this, is there a line item in our budget to supplement the UPK program? Like, how?
So the parts of the UPK program, positions, et cetera, that, that one point four million dollars is going to pay for will not be in the general fund. But there are parts of our, that doesn't cover our whole UPK program. So there are UPK program parts in the general fund. So whatever that one point four million dollar doesn't pay for, we pick up in the general fund.
Right, okay. Will we see that amount later on?
Yes.
Anybody else?
Yeah, this is just the first presentation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Adriana?
Okay. I'd like to motion that we approve items F1 to M1.
Seconded by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you very much, Mrs. Greco. Moving down to information reports and discussion, Board Roundtable. Ms. Jersey, would you start us off?
Um, sure. I went to the Tiny Town Ribbon Cutting, which was really, really nice. It's nice to see all the little kids in there. Attended a budget meeting yesterday, which was informative with Lisa. Attended several basketball games, Code of Conduct Committee meeting. I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Nothing for Jen. Lenka?
I just attended the policy meeting today and just a congratulations to our fall scholar athletes as well as to our wrestling team and most of our fall teams. What amazing job, this wonderful show.
Thank you very much. Ashley?
I attended the Tiny Town opening and the NYSIP committee there, sure. Also, I attended the, the ninth grade orientation, that's for eighth graders. It's also very good and actually the National Honor Society, I suppose, National Honor Society toured all the parents, so I thought that that was a nice feature. And you were able to ask the seniors there what they think and get some ideas about, you know, what courses they like and things like that, so it was really great. I also, I didn't attend, but my daughter attended the sixth grade dance and she had the time of her life. She loved preparing for it and then she was just blowing after it, so we really did a great job, the sixth grade dance here with all the sixth graders. And she said they all had like a circle and they were all dancing in the circle and it was just great. So I appreciate that. Thank you, that's what I got.
Thank you very much. Ashley, Mrs. Larusso?
I attended the tournament on Saturday for wrestling, the boys from Mount Mojang. It's, I think they had to get to school at five AM and we didn't get out of there. I left at seven, but I don't think the rest of the team left till like every ten or eleven o'clock at night. It was amazing, I didn't realize how intense wrestling was, so I was excited. I did attend our wrestling match yesterday at the middle school and I do want to say that, as a district, we need to do better with cleaning our bathrooms. I went into the ladies' room in the middle school and I was mortified how filthy it was. And other schools are coming into our school and using our facilities and I'm hoping that the rest of the facilities do not look like that ladies' room looked like. I did email the principal for saying this morning and sent pictures and I'm hoping it's addressed. And I understand that, you know, people are short-staffed, but at my job, we have supervisors taking our caseloads. So if that's the case, then I guess supervisors of maintenance need to get some gloves on because we have other schools coming in here, it should not be looking like that. And that's all I've done.
Thank you very much. Mr. Groden?
I too had the pleasure of attending the grand opening of Tiny Town. It was a huge little opening and it was great to see the community there and the benefits for the weekend there for parents and caregivers from zero to three years of age for their little ones. Then the informative budget meeting yesterday was eye-opening, to say the least, but I'm very enthused as where the direction this district is going, once again. And so sorry for the wrestlers last night, that was, that was, because I was at the restaurant where the other team ate. So I feel bad, I know that they fought against woke joke and it was a valiant fight. It was. That's all I got to report.
Mrs. Greco?
I was at the policy committee meeting, which we'll hear about a little later.
All right. I also attended the budget committee meeting, kind of echo Mr. Groden's sentiments that right now we're good, but, you know, always got to keep your eye on the horizon and watch out for pitfalls in the future, which our administration seems to have a very good handle on. A couple basketball games I attended and I'd like to also echo Mrs. Rivera's sentiment on, congratulations to all the fall scholar athletes. They were all listed in, I'm losing his name, Mr. Jasper's report for directors, but quite a few students did achieve that scholar athlete notoriety. So thank you very much to all the teachers, coaches and the students themselves for putting in the hard work and making that happen. So that concludes Board Roundtable, which brings us to, so we have director and principal reports since the last meeting was canceled due to weather. So we'll start off with the director reports. Does anybody have any questions or comments about those director reports? We're all good? Fantastic, which leads us to the principal reports, which would have been for this meeting anyways, I do believe. Mrs. Larusso?
Yes, and Mr. Wilder's report at the bottom, what does SSEC stand for?
It's School Safety, it's a School Safety Incident Report, I don't know the exact acronym. So the state has specific categories on things like assaults, weapons, bullying, harassment, and so we have to code incidents as we receive them and as they act on them. And then we, every year, have to report those to the State Education Department. So there are particular categories that get reported and from year to year, they, they kind of tweak definitions and categories, but, you know, it goes back, I remember the Vader report, the violence and disruptive is kind of the latter version, latter-day version of that.
Any other questions on principal reports? All right, thank you very much. Correspondence outcomes, none at the time, which leads us to Policy Committee Memo. There was a Policy Committee meeting before this meeting. Dr. Evans?
Sure, I'll ask Ms. Mason, if she wants to talk, or I can, I mean, either way.
So just today's policy meeting, we reviewed four policies and kind of sent three policies for further homework. Sorry, guys. But, and then we're moving one policy forward for first read at our next meeting. And we are going to start the, I refer to it as like a maintenance review of policies coming up as we also balance the upcoming policy recommendations for review from our NISPO organization.
Yes, and, and, you know, tonight we had the public hearing on the video conferencing policies, so tonight you're going to do the first reading of that. We have a few other policies on here for first read, I believe, two, three or four. Yeah, and I think some of those are holdovers. And most of those come as recommendations from the New York State School Boards Association. One of them comes on advice of legal counsel. The other thing that the Policy Committee discussed is we received a notice from the district's Code of Conduct Committee that it would like to have a clause in the Code of Conduct as it relates to elementary schools, delete, revised and ultimately deleted. I've shared that with the board, you have that in your executive content. The proposal would be to eliminate the prohibition of elementary students from wearing hats in school. So presently in the Code of Conduct, elementary students, with some exceptions, but they're generally prohibited from wearing hats in school. The Code of Conduct Committee received some concerns and investigated it and is recommending that that be, that language be removed and thus allowing elementary students to be able to wear hats at school. In order to change the Code of Conduct, the Board of Education has to have a public hearing. We advertise it, we have a public hearing, like we did with the video conferencing policy. And then at the conclusion of that public hearing, the board can take whatever action it sees fit. So I would like to, you know, with the board's permission, like to recommend to the board that you consider that provision and thus that we schedule a public hearing in the near future to consider that.
Fantastic. Does that conclude Policy Committee? Thank you so much. Capital Project update, Dr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. Tonight, we're asking the board to approve three change orders. Chris Ledany from CPL is here to discuss those change orders with the board. One of them is actually a credit, I believe. So that's always nice to receive. But generally speaking, before I turn this over to Chris to answer any questions that you have on change orders, we are winding down rapidly on the, the high school. There is kind of a, I guess, an informal hunch list that I've shared with the board. That update is from an owners' meeting that happened yesterday. So that's very recent. One update that I think I shared previously with the board that I wasn't completely accurate on is the panels for the exterior. So we are receiving exterior panels and the panels can be installed, however, it is the caulking around the panels that can't be applied, fixed, applied until we have consistent temperatures of forty degrees or above. So we have received, I'm hearing all of the panels for the south, east and west walls and we're still, by the end of the month, we're expecting the north wall, which is the one that everyone sees on the way in. So those will go up, I believe, before the end of March, I think that's what we're hearing, is that on here as such. We also are still, even though we balanced the boilers in the high school, we are still working out some kinks in those boilers. So, for example, up until today, we were running the pumps of the boilers at forty-five megahertz, did I get that right? Hertz, just hertz. The pump can actually go up to sixty hertz, however, that you're kind of maxing it out at that. After consulting with Train, we asked that that be increased up to fifty-five hertz, given the current cold snap that we're having, and also to improve the, the hot water circulation in the middle school and high school. And that, that change happened at eleven AM this morning. It seems to have had some positive effects. However, we're still kind of, you know, working out the system, but we're a lot closer than what we were three months ago. So those are some things that are being worked on and then you kind of had the, have these different little pieces that you see listed here. So with that, I want to turn this over to Mr. Ledany first to answer any questions you might have on the change orders and then we can answer questions that you might have on the, the progress update of the capital project.
Sure. Good. Thank you, Dr. Evans. Good evening, everyone. Just adding real quick to the, the change order, so as Dr. Evans stated, we're thankfully getting toward the end of the high school project and with that, it's kind of buttoning up and, and, you know, closing out the different contractors. So any given public work project, you have to have separate contractor, prime contractor, separate electrician, separate plumber, separate mechanical contractor, separate general contractor. So we currently closed out, for the most part, the plumbing contractor, the electrical contractor. What you have in front of you today are two change orders from Train. Train was the HVAC, the mechanical contractor. The new bus garage, that was where we got some credit back. New buildings are usually a little easier than renovations because you're kind of starting to prep. So that came in a little under, so we get that money credit back. Train doesn't have a change order for the high school. So all those items listed for the high school change order were from the life of the project, from basically day one to now. This is all the different things that have happened and we have compensated and pivoted and changed and everything is working nicely now within the renovated wing, but I just want to add that two cents to, you know, the fact that you won't see any more mechanical change orders for this project since this is being preempted. And then the general contractor is, is, you know, basically the only prime contractor that has, you know, a fair share of work to be done, which is relative to the panels in the north side. Do you guys have any questions on the change order?
The, the one forty-one train? Does that make their, they were having an issue that they were coming back at us about scheduling deficiencies at the beginning of the project? Does this make that go away? So this makes that? And then realistically, quick math, it's actually, with the twenty-five reimbursement, the one forty-one is actually somewhere's around one fifteen.
Yeah, so really the, so the, the reimbursement of the, are you talking reimbursement within the change order itself?
No, 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 the other one. We're getting back, yeah, 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 but they're giving us twenty-five, we're giving them one forty-one for a grand total of actually about one fifteen.
Yep.
Ballparking, okay. But, and this makes that larger issue go away?
Yeah, so they had initially, so the project, like everyone knows, had gone on a near longer than what we had anticipated. So with that, you know, spend extra time on site, you know, the contractors have incurred costs there, so.
I was looking at the wrong one. Two fourteen.
Through the big negotiation and meetings and things of that nature, we were able to come to a compromise and resolve the issue via change order, which was the recommended route as a consensus.
I was, I was looking at the wrong one, it was two fourteen for Train. I was looking at the key one, sorry.
Yeah, and I would say just to add to that, yeah, Chris is absolutely right. Add to that, you may recall throughout, we've had change orders from different contractors because of these changes over time. What you see here tonight with Train is really the, everything that they've done.
Right, right.
And so it's all kind of in one.
Yep, and you, and Train is going to be working with us for the currently funded SRTP project, so, you know, they have invested interest in the energy in the district, obviously. They're great to work with, with them in other districts as well. So it was definitely good to be in the compromising, good to have a healthy conversation with people that just respected each other and came to a agreement as well. It was good to see this being resolved, you know, in this type of order.
Any other questions from the board on the change orders? Mrs. Larusso?
What is the lay claim?
Yeah, you may recall that, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Anybody else? Jen?
I believe you told us previously that the general conditions were going to stop at some point. Is that, are we done now?
Yes, stop at this moment.
Yeah, okay.
So that should be the last key, general conditions?
Yes, so key is, we have a couple things that we're still kind of upping heads about as far as some of the flooring, textures, so we're going to have some additional meetings and try to hash all that out, but somewhat of a slow process sometimes with them, so they're still, they're not going anywhere because they've got to finish the panel of the building that will be finished by the end of March. So we're going to hash that out a little bit, but, you know, I'm sure I'll, I'll see the board, man, soon to give me an update on, as we progress along. So, but, you know, it is moving in the right direction.
Ashley, did you have something? Ashley, did you have something?
Oh, no, I just was trying to mention to you that I thought that was a great question.
Oh, thank you. Anybody else? Jed?
Yeah, so schedule. I get panels end of, end of March, great. What about all this other stuff? When do you think there's going to be substantial, like, there'll be?
So the other stuff on that list? Yeah, that, that's going to be taken care of. So a little challenge with the building being occupied on a daily basis. So this February break, we're looking to get a lot of that work done there. And hopefully that, that week we'll be able to finish up.
April, yeah. I'm sorry, April, yeah.
My mistake. My, the district pilot has a power.
And then I have one more question for you about, or no, I can't find it. But the, I think on here is the, like reviewing, what's it called? When you look at the buildings and you, I guess the condition assessment?
Yeah, the building conditions are, yes. I'll be here next four meeting in two weeks presenting.
Oh, great.
Are we satisfied? Mrs. Home?
No, no, we're fine.
All right. Vicki?
What is this, the high school said identify odor in room 111, 113?
Yeah, so we're investigating that right now. So you put new products into the space or a new parcel, for example, any given material has a, has a lot of gas in it. Don't be scared by, I mean, there, and then there's limits. So we can't put any products in any schools or really any sort of inhabited space, specialty schools, that has any sort of volatile kind of level of any gas. So, they also get some volatile organic compound, correct? So in the steam room, which used to be the former dance studio, one of the, you know, I think the teachers in there had noticed a particular smell. So we had OCS come in, actually, our Mr. Lewis, his director, had OCS come in to test the air quality and everything. There's, there's no level of anything harmful in the air, which is good. We investigated the flooring. The flooring was new, took an area, pulled it up and wanted to make sure that the KCO from the back of that floor wasn't having a chemical reaction with the sublayer, which wasn't the case. So we're slowly ruling things out. But right now, we don't know where the, the smell is coming from. I haven't smelled it yet, but it, the description of the smell is a slight chlorine smell potentially, but it's not chlorine because we did the air sampling. So what we're going to do now is another air sampling set test is to make sure it hasn't waivered at all. And then after that, we've also tested some of the HVAC system to increase the airflow in that building, in that room. Because that room is actually has a dedicated air vent. So we did something. Yeah, so we're on it and it's a collective team effort to try to figure it out.
And it's, like Chris said, I've been in there too, it's intermittent. I haven't noticed it when I've been in there, but it has, you know, other times when the teacher and students have been in there, so it's kind of difficult to kind of pin down.
It is.
When the teacher gets in there, is it more like in the morning because it's been contained and the HVAC has been shut down because it's not inhabited?
I don't know. I could have sworn it could have been because in there, there was a folding partition, so the rubber gasketing of that, we had that kind of rubber thing. I was like, it's got to be that. And the complaint happened before that was installed, so.
Oh, really?
So we're slowly ruling things out. It's a little bit of an investigation.
Any other questions regarding the change orders? Mrs. LaRusso?
Dishwasher, panel damage. So in that, so track sound pretty loud. So they have that running? Yeah.
So the plumbing contractor is, is telling us they're, they're on order, but I have to be completely transparent with you. It's been difficult to try to get into that plumbing contractor because those dishwashers were district provided, contracted, installed. So it's, you know, we're going to make it right. You have my word.
And we also.
It's just taking longer than.
We also have a retainage.
Yes, yes.
With this contractor. So we're, you know, once they complete their work, they'll get their full.
Exactly. So a way, Dr. Evans is right, a way to kind of leverage some of this is to make sure to hold it. You know, anytime we pay a contractor, we hold 5% of that income. And so we don't give that 5% back until it's satisfied or given a bunch of it.
Anything else for Mr. Ladany?
Yeah, one more. Task four.
Yes.
So it's supposed to be in state ed now. Is it, what's state ed's review time? Is that task four going to be still on schedule for summer?
It won't be on, it's not for this summer, it'll be for the following summer. So this summer, we're doing Chase Elementary School.
That's the first one?
No. That's Esser.
Yeah.
Oh, right, right, right.
Yeah, because we had the big, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Four-phase capital project, and then the federal funded Esser ARP project came in. And those kind of interrupted them because there's deadlines for spending that money. And SED is actually taking, so State Education Department is actually taking those as priority. So actually, your, your regular projects, if you call them that, are taking a lot longer than get reviews because they prioritize the federal funded projects. So there is a bottleneck there.
So those like three weeks when they're prioritized?
It, it's, they're doing pretty well. So the tech, there's two reviews in SED. It's the technical review, so it's like engineers and architects looking at the technical aspect of it all, and then the project manager review, and they look at all paperwork and finances and things like that. So the technical reviews are very smooth and quick. It's, the bottleneck is the PM review with all due respect to them. They have, there's only about three of them, they're hiring more, they're trying to, you know, fill that position more so that you get more stream mind, but that's where the bottleneck is.
Any other questions for Mr. Ladany? Thank you very much, Chris, for making yourself available.
Thank you, Chris.
Take care, everyone.
Have a good night. Safe travels.
Somebody signed my thing.
Whatever floats your boat. Upcoming events are on the agenda. President's Day, Policy Committee meetings and all of that fun stuff, so please take a look. Community events, plenty of articles. We've been covered pretty heavily recently. Please take a look. Hey, Linca?
I'd just like to add something on there. Selfish plug as a Rotary member. Our 45th Annual Rotary Heart Ason will be on the 17th, February 17th, Friday. The benefit benefits Garden Health Cardiac Department. If you haven't already started to see the little heart throughout the middle school and high school, please reach out to any of your Interact fellow students to purchase a heart. And also we'll be doing, conducting a blood drive at the same time. So anyone that would like to help buy and donate blood, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
And thank you to Mr. Marizana, who's the advisor for the Interact team.
Thank you very much, Linca. Which brings us to questions and comments from the public. Janet?
Nobody.
Nobody at this time. Superintendent update information, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. So tonight, I want to recognize a few other individuals who have, you know, either been appointed to our district or have attained tenure status. So Cheryl Somerville, High School Special Education Teacher, I don't believe she's here tonight, will be recommended for, or I believe has just received tenure from the Board of Education. So congratulations to Somerville. I know some of you who pay attention to these board meetings saw a resignation from Reginald Roberts tonight. Well, not to worry, Reggie is moving up to become Assistant Operator of the District. Congratulations, Reggie. Now, elementary, excuse me, pre-K teacher Nicole Barron has received your certification from State Ed, so now she's a fully full probationary pre-K teacher. Congratulations, Ms. Barron. We welcome Andres Tamaio as a leave replacement physical education teacher. He is covering for Mr. Jasper role. Mr. Jasper is Athletic Director. He's not here tonight, but we welcome Mr. Tamaio to our district. There's an awful lot going on, obviously wrestling matches, basketball games, you know, I really encourage, and our student athletes are here tonight and well done. Please go to our website and see what's going on to stay current with that. We also this weekend are, I believe it's our middle school jazz band, Mr. Feltman, or is it the high school jazz?
It's both.
It's both. Are performing at the Liberty Jazz Festival, that's tomorrow, Saturday, excuse me. So good luck to them. So I know everybody is kind of watching the weather for tomorrow and some of the wind chill forecasts are disturbing. What the National Weather Service recommends for kind of dangerously low wind chill temperatures are anything at negative 18 degrees Fahrenheit wind chill and below. At that point, if an individual is exposed for 30 minutes in that type of wind chill, they can develop hypothermia. So we kind of use that guidance from the National Weather Service to help inform decision-making around, you know, potential exposures for students on days when it's extremely cold. The forecast for the morning right now as we sit looks to be above that, you know, fairly decently above that. Still going to be cold, but that looks good. So we think we're in good shape there. Obviously with the cold, could come other things like, you know, if there's any type of heating issues, they get, you know, magnified because of the outdoor temperature. There's always the potential for gelling of diesel engines. However, our Transportation Department will be up early warming up the engines, checking on those, putting the additives to our fuel, and we're hope, we're optimistic that that won't be an issue. Where we think we're going to run into an issue will be tomorrow evening. So what I've already informed our administrators that we'll be doing as we sit right now, and this could change tomorrow as we monitor the weather, but we, we right now plan on having a full school day. We plan on having our athletic competitions, so the basketball tournament, the wrestling match. We will not, though, have late buses. So if there's any type of practice or club activity that is scheduled for after school, those will most likely, those will be canceled. Now, that is subject to change. You know, as I walk in tomorrow morning and I look at the forecast and we monitor it and we kind of look at what is the wind chill factor outside, you know, I just want to remind everyone that we do have a significant number of our students who walk to and from our schools, given our geography. So we, you know, have to be mindful of them as they walk. But right now, as it stands, the determination is there's no late bus runs tomorrow, but the basketball games and the wrestling match are still on because we expect them to be transported home by their, their parents. So that's, that's where we sit currently, but that's, again, stay tuned. Some different things, another thing that's coming up over the next several weeks, we will begin surveying our students, parents and staff on school climate and culture. And I've been reporting on this for several months now. That time has come. The timeline is that beginning on February 8th and running through the next several weeks, Alabrevay Consulting will be doing individual interviews with our administrators on school climate and culture. Their responses will be kept confidential. On or around February 13th, we will begin student surveys, and that will be every student in grades four through 12 on school climate and culture. So those are going to be questions around things like, you know, I feel appreciated and respect, what extent do you feel appreciated and respected here? To what extent are you challenged academically? There'll be questions about extracurricular offerings, about curriculum, about facilities, about everything. We're really trying to get a baseline on, you know, what percentage of our students believe this? We don't have that comprehensively throughout the district. So I, you know, I ask students that you do take those seriously, that you, you know, know that they're going to help us inform where we're going and where we need to place our resources. We'll also be surveying parents, that will come out after the student surveys. And then on the March 10th Conference Day, we'll be giving staff time to do their surveys as well. So we'll be building that into the March 10th Conference Day. All responses are confidential and anonymous. They will be done through Survey Monkey. The only information that a respondent will be given, will ask, be asked to give is what is their school. So students aren't going to respond to, you know, their name, their, their gender, anything else. It's what's your school? So they're completely anonymous. And again, I've seen in previous work in other districts, school climate and perception surveys, that data put to great use to make improvements. And without that information, you know, we hear things, we see things, but we don't know kind of the scale of it. And I've shared with you some of the focus group discussions we've had. Those are small focus groups, that's not necessarily all of the high school student body or all of the middle school staff or what have you. Okay, so more to come on that. And we'll be putting stuff out next week informing the community of that. Those of you who are, it's Monday in Montestello watchers, stay tuned. We had our student roundtable meetings as Michael discussed, and I had those at the middle school as well. We had our Capital Project update. Administrator searches. On Tuesday, we interviewed seven applicants for the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction position. And I want to thank Mr. Brandino and Ms. Nolton for joining me in that process. We'll be interviewing six more applicants on Monday. And we expect to have about five, I'll call them, I guess, semifinalists to a stakeholder focus group, probably the week of February 13th. That's how we're trending. They will be giving, giving me back kind of a rank order of recommendation, and we're hoping to have a board appointment at the March 2nd meeting. I hope to have an interim for the board approval at the next board meeting. And then lastly, academic calendar for next year, you have a draft of that. I will be bringing that back to the Board at the February 16th meeting for your approval. We got feedback from our, some of our unions and employees about, hey, can you do this? And can you look at that instead? So what we did was, we moved the first conference day for all of our 10-month staff to be the Tuesday after Labor Day. So there'll be September 6th.
Fifth and sixth.
Fifth and sixth will be two conference days. First day for students will be Thursday, September 7th. In the spring, the spring break will be, I think it's the last week in March, just like the week before Easter. And then we have two days off for Passover later in April. Those are typically together, but next year they're apart. And we still get in 181 days of school plus eight snow days, which is the same as what we have this year. So I want to thank, you know, the feedback that we have on that. OCS has adjusted their calendar accordingly, and other districts are looking at theirs as well. Some other districts have already adopted it. So that's the report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Any questions for Dr. Evans? Ashley?
I just wanted to say thank you for the climate surveys being through Survey Monkey that allow everything to be anonymous.
Oh, cool.
And does not track the email.
Yes.
I really appreciate that.
Oh, welcome.
Vicki?
Oh, in the high school roundtable, there was a comment saying the heat in 200 degrees always freeze in there. I've heard this complaint as well. How is that being addressed?
So we're, that's, those are kind of the ongoing conversations we're having with If you look at the thermostats and if you look on the readouts on our software, it'll say 68, 69, 70 degrees. That's what it says on the, on the wall. And I've experienced this just this afternoon, we had a meeting in 226. And when you stand under a vent and a head like mine, you feel the cold air blowing. And we don't, I mean, on the one hand, that tells us there's good circul, you know, ventilation and circulation, and we're anticipating the air conditioning to be potent in the spring, which is good. But we don't know why that's kind of coming out as cold as it is, and on the thermostat is still reading 70 degrees. So we assume that the thermostat's correct, but we don't know is exactly why it's blowing cold like that. So we are, that's kind of part of the, upping the pumps up to like 40, 55 hertz. Hopefully we'll address some of that. But we're, we're aware of it, and we're asking Train to kind of respond to that question. But I, yeah, we do recognize it and sorry, folks, that, you know, we're still having to wear sweatshirts from time to time, but we are trying to address it.
One other thing, in the beginning, we used to get, I think Janice sent us an email on ongoing events that were happening, like a sporting event. Do you guys remember? She used to send us, and there are no leads to get back. It makes it easier as more, as a more member, just to see, oh, we have this this week, then we can kind of pick things to go to.
The sport schedule that Janet used to put out?
Yeah.
We could, yeah, we.
It comes from our.
Athletic Director?
Yes.
Okay.
We get like a weekly.
And I have to receive them when I do get them.
This makes it easier to see what's going on, so we kind of pick where to go.
There is also, you know, there's a place on the website that has it as well, right? I can walk you through that. I have to, yep, yep.
Any other questions for Dr. Evans? Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Are you filling in for Mrs. Phelan?
So there's a budget status and revenue report for the month of November 2022. There's also a claims auditor report. There's also a claims auditor report and the school launch profit. There's an intermunicipal agreement with Sullivan West Central School District. Uh, you may recall that they have a student who's kind of going to Bozie, I believe it's OU Bozies or another placement where we happen to be going too, so they're kind of bringing their student to us, and we're cartpooling from here, if you do it that way. Uh, and then, uh, the state comptroller issued the fiscal and environmental stress, uh, monitoring report for our district. And, uh, there's some good news in there, which is, is untied, not that. Um, our fiscal stress has, uh, decreased, uh, which is a good sign. Uh, opening up the exact terminology, I believe we've moved from moderate to susceptible to moderate stress, uh, which is moving in the right direction. And if you look kind of in that, into those detailed indicators, many of the fiscal stress indicators where we're, where we could score better, for lack of a better term, a lot of that is because of our demographics being what they are. So a lot of this is kind of, you know, local demographic driven. Uh, and again, this is set up by the state comptroller. We don't give input on this. Uh, but, uh, a lot of this, you know, I, I do give Ms. Phelan a lot of credit for, for, you know, the fiscal monitoring that she does and our auditors and our business office and everyone else. So, uh, this is good news. Uh, I dare say that this is probably as good as we can get on a fiscal stress report, so.
Any questions regarding, uh, our pseudo Lisa? Thank you, everybody. Um, hopefully, next meeting, we'll have a report out from our interim Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, and that moves us along to Mrs. Greco.
Um, I'd like the motion that we consider, actually, I have it's T one through T fifteen.
Uh, do I have a second on that by Mrs. Rivera? Any discussion? Yes, Ashley?
I think it's actually in T seven. So we have to. Scott said, right?
Whoa. That would be at the vote, wouldn't it?
All right, so you can, you want to oblige?
I would, um, you want me to do that now, or do we want to vote on just considering it first?
Uh, we, then we can just pull it now? Or we vote, and we vote to consider it, and then at the next round, that's when we talk about it. One more step and we're at you. Um, so, all in favor? So ordered? Mrs. Greco?
All right. So they do have time to ask questions?
I think you move to accept, right? And then we, at that discussion point, we would discuss, yeah.
Then I motion to accept T one to T fifteen.
Do I have a second? Made by Mrs. Jersey. Any discussion? Mrs. Riley?
This is the time to say that I would like to remove action item T seven to discuss, or we just?
We discuss now.
All right, so my question is about that policy. Um, it's, it's about the, let me bring it up there. It's the one one five student harassment and bullying prevention and intervention. It's about seven pages.
What page are you on that you have a question about?
Okay, I have a few pages. So let's start with number five. So page five, when it, when it talks about training, it talks about the DAX, which was like a district. I was trying to find what that stands for.
Dignity, Dignity Act Coordinator.
Okay, the Dignity Act Coordinator, so it would be of each school. So, um, the Dignity Act Coordinator will be trained in accordance with state requirements and will continue their professional development so as to successfully support this policy program. So my question is, it says, these will be trained in accordance with state requirements. So that, with this policy just being just the state requirements, we're not adding anything in additional to state requirements. That's my one question. That's how I interpret this, is that we're, we're asking for training with what the state requirements are, and we're not doing anything in addition to the state requirements?
I read that as they would be trained in accordance with straight, state requirements would be a minimum. Yeah. And then if they, if they needed more professional development or something of that nature, but you need to have a, what's, what's the minimum requirement of that? That they would be trained in accordance with state requirements?
Okay. Do we know yet where the state's programs are? Have they?
Well, it's, this is, the, the Dignity Act is the Dignity for All Students Act. So that's kind of the state's bullying and harassment prevention law. So that, that line really is saying that our Dignity Act coordinators will remain current on that. Okay, so that's what that, thank you, that's what that, that is saying.
Okay, okay.
No, that doesn't mean they're, that's the only training they're going to get. I mean, our Dignity Act coordinators are, are principals, so they get professional development as they seek it out, you know, through other means too, so.
So, um, page, so maybe after I get through all this, it'll kind of loop around to where I'm getting at with my, my full questioning. But on page three, it talks about curricular material that raises awareness and sensitivity to discrimination, harassment, and disability, the relationships with people of different races, weights, national origins, ethnic groups, religions, religious practices, mental or physical abilities, sexual orientations, sexes or gender expression, or identities will be included in the structural program K through twelve. So my thoughts were, just with this policy, are we dealing with, this is only, we're giving only what's state required for curriculum for, for grades K through twelve? Is that what this policy is saying? That we're?
Well, the state has standards. They, the state would argue they have standards, they don't necessarily have curriculum, right? And that local boards of ed, teachers, schools kind of determine what that curriculum looks like. So, uh, certainly, you know, the board adopts curriculum, you know, when we get, talk about core programs, staff, teachers, administrators develop curriculum, you know, if it's not like some, um, it's not a big tech, textbook program. So this policy is basically saying that, uh, you, that curriculum will include raising awareness around, uh, these areas. So it's not specifying a curriculum per se, it's just saying that this will be accounted for somewhere in the curriculum to make students feel welcome and that they belong and.
Which everyone agrees with that, it's just, it's just talking about providing curriculum K through twelve, and it's incorporating some, some material that would be age inappropriate for kindergarten grades.
Well, it would be, no, it'd be age appropriate for kindergarten. So it's not all of these things would happen in kindergarten per se. So some of it might, but whatever, if it does, it would be done in a way that's age appropriate.
Okay, and that's not really spelled out here, that's just implied?
Yes, yeah.
It's not spelled out, it's just implied.
Yeah.
Um, so then it talks about, um, last thing, so last thing talks about what discrimination means.
Where are you at?
On definitions, it's page one, definitions. It just says discrimination, number three. Discrimination is the act of denying rights, benefits, justice, equitable treatment, or access to facilities available to all others, to an individual or group of people because of the group, class, or category to which that person belongs. And then as enumerated in definition section, harassment, all that. So my thought was like, access to facilities, equitable treatment, I'm just, to me, it's, it's very generalized, and it doesn't really, um, I could just see there being perhaps issues with, um, like when you say, um, like a female male situation, because you're not supposed to say that you're, you know, this, this, when I read this, I'm just wondering if it's, um, if it's just making it so that a, a child can't say hey, you know? Um, I, maybe I have a problem with, um, a, a male being on the female swimming team or something like that. You know, I don't know what that, I mean, that's really kind of like getting too much into it, maybe into the weeds, but I just don't know, um, that language there. Is that coming just straight from the state and we're just adopting it verbatim?
So this is, this policy, like many of our policies, comes from the New York State School Boards Association and their legal review and interpretation of existing law, court decisions, uh, and other rulings. But I, I want to kind of play out that example you gave. So what this policy does is, so let's say we do have a student who expresses that concern. It then is incumbent upon us, based on this policy, to have some education for that student on how they might be able to better understand it, comprehend it in a way that, because swimming's not a good example because you have like a, a boys' team and a girls' team. But there are sports like, let's say, football, where there's no female alternative to, to fall football. So females can play on the football team. So let's say, uh, there's a, a male, for example, let's say there's a male player who has an issue with that. What this policy requires us to do then is to kind of address that situation and walk through with them what discrimination is, uh, what, uh, harassment might be, what the rights are of the female athletes on that football team. So that's really the, what this policy is requiring us to do. The, the female athlete in that example is allowed to participate in football under other, uh, policies and other, uh, state ed regulations and, and rulings. This policy basically says that we're supportive of that and we will protect, in this example, that female ath, those female athletes' rights to do so and raise awareness on, if there's questions around it.
I just wouldn't want a, a child to be penalized for voicing their thoughts on something that isn't politically correct, but is something that would be a concern of theirs. If they're in a setting where they would not feel comfortable, they would say, you know, I, that would be under here as being something that they would, it would not be acceptable speech. That's what I'm getting from this. A student would be told that that's not acceptable to discriminate based on gender.
Right, but for something to be unacceptable speech, that means they might be subject to punishment, right? Or your discipline, so. Any discipline infractions, that has to be enumerated in our code of conduct. What this policy is basically charging the district with is when those examples arise, we have to take action on them and educate, uh, inform, what have you, not punish, but educate, inform about what rights are, what discrimination is, harassment, whatever the case may be. But this policy does not spell out punishment or disciplinary action. All that's in our code of conduct. So if you saw that in the code of conduct, that's where punishment would be how, would be defined.
And if that person had a comment, their civil rights under five would be protected where it says violation of an individual's civil rights and their free speech would be infringed. So that person speaking would have their rights covered.
Yeah, the First Amendment doesn't go away, it's just a, a matter of what the nature of the speech is. And that, that's really the fact, you know, you have to get down to what actually happened, what was said.
Are we good? All right. Um, are you okay with leaving it as a group?
No.
So Adriana, would you like to amend your motion?
Um, I'd like to amend my motion to be that we, um, vote upon, um, I can have T one to T six and T eight to T fifteen.
Do I have a second on that? Made by Mrs. Riley. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Mrs. Greco?
I would like to motion that we vote upon act nine of T seven.
Do I have a second on that? Made by Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Uh, Mrs. Riley and Mrs. LaRusso, Janet? Our motion carried. Um, that brings us to closing of the meeting. Correspondence? Um, none at this time. Janet, do we have any questions or comments from the public? Thank you very much. Could I have a motion for adjournment? Made by Ms. Jersey, seconded by Ms. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Anybody up here can sign your papers, so.
Come on, Dad, let's go. Got Tim Cromley up on the, who's running the meeting, that's him, the boy president.
He's not a guy. Absolutely, how are you?
This one did, thanks.